I'd like to call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of this land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Carrasi, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Amadis.
Here.
Mrs. Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Present.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza.
Present.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
You have nine members present.
Thank you. Before we begin our meeting this evening, the Board would like to take this opportunity to extend our sympathies to Bethel Park High School Principal, Dr. Zeb Jan Santi, on the passing of his mother, Olive, on September 10th. Mrs. Jan Santi was 93 years young when she passed away. She worked as an elementary school secretary until she was 80 years old. She loved to read, and in her memory, the Board would like to donate a book to the Bethel Park High School Library. When we were deciding on which book to purchase, we thought perhaps a book about football, since her husband played for the Pittsburgh Steelers, but we found out that she was more of a baseball fan. So that was out. We know that as a mother of nine children, she did a great deal of cooking, and one of her greatest pleasures was preparing Sunday dinners for her entire family. So with that thought in mind, we purchased the book, "No Reservations Around the World on an Empty Stomach," by the legendary food connoisseur Anthony Bourdain. Mr. Bourdain may have traveled around the world to sample some of the planet's best cuisine, but he never had the pleasure of enjoying some of Mrs. Jan Santi's cooking. Zeb, we thought some of your students at the high school who have seen Mr. Bourdain on television may enjoy reading this book, to not only become inspired to travel, but also to cook and create new foods. At this time, I would ask you to join me at the podium. I know what it's like to lose a mother, and two days' mind will be two years gone from me, and we all extend our deepest sympathies to you and your family at this time.
I'd just like to thank the Board. It's been a great district to be a part of, I feel like it's a family. Living in the community certainly helps to solidify that, but there's no one like Mom, and I know everyone appreciates their Mom. I did appreciate mine, so thank you for recognizing that, and we'll put this in the high school library, and once again, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Zeb. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
I have one. It's in addition to the Personnel Committee, and it is item number nine. You do not have that out there, so I'm going to read it. It's the approval of staffing changes. The Board of School Directors approves the Administration's recommendations to approve the following staff changes, effective February 16th, 2017. One, to close the following positions: Director of Secondary Education, 5 through 12; Director of Elementary Education; Director of Human Resources. Two, open the following positions: Assistant Superintendent and Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, K through 12.
Would you like to expand on that a little?
Sure. So on the agenda tonight, as you do well know, and I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank Dr. De Start, who will be retiring, not yet, have a lot of work to do. She's been very helpful and supportive of me, but when she does move on after February 16th, 2017, to spend time with her family, we are going to make, I'm recommending to the Board, some changes as far as the positions will be. One, there will be an Assistant Superintendent, and second of all, there will be a Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, K to 12. And the new position around the Coordinator of Curriculum and Instruction, we do feel that position, I look for that person to play a very active role, both as supporting our administrators and our principals, but also supporting our teaching staff, and around many of the new initiatives and PDE recommendations that are coming forth. Having a focus on getting into the classrooms and supporting teachers in around curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So we're very, I'm very excited to try to just reallocate those. We are eliminating one of the positions, and that's the Director of Human Resources, which will be absorbed by some other folks throughout the administration.
And we need to vote on that agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of August 23rd, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held September 20th, 2016, for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and to receive information, and September 27th, 2016, for Personnel, Other Legal Matters, and to receive information. Staff report, and Dr. Star.
Yes, and good evening. This is the beginning of our fourth week, and we already have several items of good news to share with you this evening. Our first four items were accolades that were earned over the summer. Independence Middle School 8th Grader Kelly Cattilius earned a gold medal at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America's National Convention in San Diego, California, for her project, "My First Apartment," which was entered into the Junior Life Planning Event. Kelly earned the right to compete at Nationals because she earned a gold medal at the State FCCLA Competition last March. Congratulations to Kelly on this national recognition. Bethel Park High School Junior Noah Gearhart won first place in the high school documentary category of Steel Town Entertainment's Take a Shot Youth Film Contest. Noah's video talked about what he perceived as an increase in students using inappropriate language, and he encouraged his peers to take the rubber band challenge, which is designed to get people to stop swearing by wearing a rubber band around their wrist and snapping it on themselves whenever they swear. For winning the competition, Noah received $1,500 and the use of video equipment from Steel Town Entertainment for one year. His video is available on YouTube. Way to go, Noah. Congratulations also go to Bethel Park High School Senior Tanaya Beatty, who was one of 30 area students who was selected to participate in the Frank Bolden Urban Journalism Workshop this summer at Point Park University. Tanaya spent eight days participating in valuable hands-on workshops, focusing on broadcast journalism and story writing. She was able to work with a KDKA TV cameraman to film a story at the high school with school nurse Tracy Ford about the Stand group at the high school. Her culminating project was to co-anchor a news broadcast that was filmed on the KDKA TV news set. You can also see Tanaya's newscast on YouTube. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School Junior Haley Ruffing, who participated in the National Youth Leadership Forum Law and CSI, which was held in July in Washington, DC. During the week-long program, Haley had the opportunity to explore the many career options available in the fields of law and forensic science. She was one of 477 students from the United States and several other countries selected for this program. Haley returned from her trip eager to learn more about her options in the field of forensic science. Bethel Park High School Science Teacher Lee Cristofano and Neil Armstrong Middle School 5th Grade Teacher Joe Rossi were among a group of 12 Pittsburgh-area teachers from eight school districts who were selected to participate in a summer program at Carnegie Mellon University focused on data fluency. The teachers spent time at CMU's Create Lab to explore ways to apply the concept of data and technology fluency in their schools. The teachers received the use of some very cool technology developed by the CMU researchers, including a 360-degree camera and camera technology similar to that used on the Mars Rover. They will also be supported throughout the year by representatives from CMU. Both teachers are looking forward to having their students collaborate on some projects that will get both groups of students thinking about how data deeply impacts their lives. Bethel Park High School has four seniors who have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation in its 2017 National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to semifinalists Rachel McLean and to commended students Nathan McCowsky, Megan McClary, and Ryan Fob. Rachel was one of the top 16,000 scorers on the PSAT, which she took last year to achieve semifinalist status. She is now eligible to be named one of the 15,000 finalists, who will be eligible to receive one of 7,500 National Merit Scholarships to be awarded next spring. As commended students, Nathan, Megan, and Ryan are among the top 34,000 students who took the PSAT but did not qualify for semifinalist status. Approximately 1.6 million students took the PSAT last year to enter into this program. Congratulations to all of these students, and good luck to Rachel as she moves to the next stage of the program. Four Bethel Park High School musicians were selected to perform in the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association's Onr Ring String Orchestra Concert, which will be held on Sunday, November 20th, at 3:30 PM at Bethel Park High School. Representing Bethel Park in this event will be Emily Cowser, William May, Preston Smith, and Janelle Wu. Congratulations to these outstanding musicians. The teachers on Team A at Independence Middle School wasted no time this school year getting their students to learn to work together in small groups. First, they had the students brainstorm a year-long community service project, and the students decided to focus on preschool literacy for underprivileged children. Then they had the students learn the importance of working together by using two STEAM-themed activities: building a freestanding tower out of balloons and a roll of masking tape, and building a freestanding tower out of dried spaghetti, string, and masking tape that would support the weight of a marshmallow. The students enjoyed both projects, but the real eye-opening lesson was for them to see the value of working in groups that may or may not have included their friends. 7th grade students are not only creating beautiful projects in their art classes, but they are also learning about the artists that originally created the projects. For example, 7th graders in Nina Percy's room learned how artists in Haiti upcycle old metal drums and transform them into beautiful metal sculptures. The IMS students used their Chromebooks to research Haitian patterns and textures before sketching their own designs on six-by-six sheets of aluminum or copper. Once the designs were transferred to the metal, the students used a variety of tools to carve their designs into the metal, and then bump out the metal to raise their designs. Once finished, they applied India ink into the design's crevices and wiped off the excess before framing. The results were outstanding. Franklin Elementary School kicked off its Hero Responsible Behavior Program with a visit from three elite runners: Ben Blankenship, who finished in 8th place at the Rio Olympics in the mile; Heather Kampf, a four-time winner of the Liberty Mile Race; and Jordan McNamara, a two-time winner of the Liberty Mile, who were all in town to run the 2016 Liberty Mile Race. They talked to the students about running and the importance of fitness, but they focused mainly on the importance of setting goals and achieving whatever they can dream. The athletes came to Franklin thanks to physical education teacher Linda Bruckner, who entered Franklin into a drawing that was sponsored by the Pittsburgh Marathon. Bethel Park High School is seeking nominations for its 2017 Great Alumni Hall of Fame. You have until October 31st to submit a nomination for a Bethel Park alumni who has made great contributions either professionally or through community service. Nomination forms are available on the high school's alumni webpage. The class of 2017 will be inducted in January, and we thank everyone for taking the time to nominate an outstanding alumni for recognition in this program. And that concludes our report for this evening.
Thank you very much. Student government?
Hi, my name is JD Measures, and I'm the senior school board rep here with Avi Donalan, our junior school board rep. And our most prominent project in SGA right now is Homecoming Week, of course, so we start off with Powderpuff on Sunday and a big senior win. And then Monday through Friday, we have themed days each day to keep all the students involved. And on Friday, our parade will start at 6:00 along with the tailgate, and then a 7:30 kickoff for the game. And finally, on Friday, we'll have the dance at 7 o'clock with the New York, New York theme, and hope to see you all at the game Friday.
Super, thanks. And I had the pleasure of meeting your parents this weekend. PTA, PTO council.
Hi, I'm Miranda Hurley from Bethel Memorial, first year president.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Here we go. Abraham Lincoln. Lincoln's annual welcome-back picnic was held on August 31st at the school and was a huge success. A special thank you to the PTO board members, their families, and local businesses that helped them make this event successful. The Abraham Lincoln Teddy Bear Picnic was held on September 1st and was another great event to welcome new students to Lincoln. The first Abraham Lincoln PTO meeting took place on September 6th. Abraham Lincoln Open House was held on September 8th. The annual PTO bake sale took place that evening as well. Lincoln also sold 44 raffle tickets for the Carnegie Museum in support of the STEAM program. Lincoln's first spirit night was held at Chick-fil-A on September 19th. Lincoln's Fall Book Fair and Fall Festival dates have changed. The Fall Book Fair is now scheduled for October 12th, 13th, and 14th, and the Fall Festival will be on the evening of October 14th. Ben Franklin. Ben Franklin is off to a wonderful start this year. They kicked off the year with a spirit night at Bethel Park Rita's. They are currently running their membership drive along with the Spiritware fundraiser. Franklin will host their open house this week and will end the month with a spirit night at Chick-fil-A. Preparations are also underway for the Ladies Night Out fundraiser held at the Bethel Park Community Center in November. George Washington. The Kids Stuff coupon book sale ran from September 9th to September 20th. On September 9th, George Washington went gold in support of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. On September 13th, the first PTO meeting of the year was held. On September 23rd, the BP Gear Sale began. BP Gear items will be on sale until October 7th. On September 23rd, the Pierogies Plus Sale began and will run until September 30th. This Thursday, September 29th, is the Open House and Bake Sale. On Friday, October 7th, will be Family Bingo Night at 7:00 PM in the school cafeteria. Scholastic Book Fair begins on October 3rd and runs until October 7th. The Fall fundraiser will begin on October 14th and run until the 24th. Scholastic Book Fair begins on October 5th and runs until October 9th. Memorial. On the first day of school, September 6th, the Memorial teachers enjoyed their welcome-back teachers breakfast. Memorial's Ice Cream Social was on September 8th. There was wonderful weather and great turnout of parents, students, teachers, and principal. They enjoyed ice cream from Betsy's Ice Cream and flavored ice from Kona Ice. Memorial's first school-wide fundraiser, Otis Spunkmeyer, ran from September 12th to September 26th. Memorial had a Rita Spirit Night on September 13th. Student Store, which supports 4th grade activities, was on September 16th. On September 22nd, Memorial held its Open House and Bake Sale. There are four tables filled with goodies, thanks to all who donated. Family Bingo was a fun night out for Memorial families. Even with having technical difficulties with the microphone, our amazing special guest, bingo caller Mr. Chalice, was still successful in keeping the game going. Every child won a prize from a raffle called throughout the night, thanks to those who volunteered. William Penn. William Penn families enjoyed a welcome-back picnic at the end of August. The picnic was well-attended, and everyone had a fun time reconnecting. William Penn kicked off our Character Trait Program by hanging new banners in our hallway that corresponds with the trait of the month. The character trait is represented by a different color and animal. The theme for this year is Wild About Character. Students are given an animal cutout when they are caught demonstrating that trait. They will then add their animals to the designated wall in the hallway. Each month, they will hold a Character Trait Day, and the students are encouraged to wear that specific color to school to highlight the importance of showing character. September's character trait is self-control. Open House for William Penn was held on Wednesday, September 21st, 2016. The Kids Stuff fundraiser concluded on September 21st, 2016. The 4th graders of William Penn enjoyed a hayride and bonfire at Simmons Farm, coordinated by our 4th Grade Activities Committee. They just started our Bethel Park Clothing Sale, which will go on until the end of the month. The William Penn PTO is looking forward to our first PTO meeting of the year, which will be held on September 27th. That's all.
That's enough, that's lots. Thanks. Solicitors report. Public comments on any agenda items this evening?
Stephanie Silman, 5087 Sherwood Road. I wanted to comment on the Special Ed Policy re-revision that is posted on the agenda this evening. I was, after the conversations that were had at the last meeting, I was disappointed to read the revised policy. It was communicated by the Board that the policy was only in place to convey the need to prohibit secret recordings of meetings. The policy, again, does not read that way to somebody who was not involved in any conversation that took place outside this room, or who's just coming and reading the policy on their own. I understand the reason behind it, but I have to question, you know, where the intention lies, what is it that the Board is trying to protect or prohibit here? It seems a little demeaning to me as a parent to have to relay a special need on my part in order to have an accommodation like a recording granted. You know, with the stigma that exists around special education and special needs to begin with in this country, to do something like that seems just unreasonable to me, and I just wanted to express that disappointment before the meeting happened.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We'll move into Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are three items this evening under curriculum. Would any like any held out? Hearing none, I move under curriculum, number one, professional development; two, school-sponsored overnight educational activities; and three, independent study.
Second.
Items one through three under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are nine items under Personnel. I move, one, approval of substitutes; two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program; three, approval of administration tuition reimbursement; four, memorandum of understanding Bethel Park Federation of Teachers; five, change of assignment; six, approval of staffing changes; seven, appointment of personnel; eight, classified permanent; and nine, approval of staffing changes.
Mrs. Rule, I'd like nine to be held out, please.
Nine to be held out. Okay, I move one through eight to be approved.
Second.
Items one through eight under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on these items?
I have one question on the after-school elementary tutors, all those positions I didn't ask before. How many, is this an increase or decrease, or is it pretty much the same that we've had from years past on tutors?
This is the same as it has always been. We have three tutors at the larger buildings, and they each tutor three days a week, and we have two tutors at William Penn. Sometimes there are more names than three because some of the teachers split the positions, but it's the same total number of positions at the same dollar cost as last year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move item nine, approval of staffing changes.
Second.
Item nine under Personnel Committee has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item?
I'm not convinced that we should eliminate the Director of Human Resources and split that job up among other people at this time, so I will be voting no on that.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
I have a comment. If it doesn't work out, we can always add another position, but it's difficult to eliminate a position, so I think it's a, not a very big gamble to go ahead this way.
I also just added a comment, that we have been doing it with the current amount of staffing for probably the last four or five months, and I think that's enough time for the tests to agree going along with a lot of Mr. Means's comments as well, and probably voting for it.
I'm not going to comment on that, but you all know what.
Anybody else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries eight to one. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Spicuzza.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Under Facility and Services Committee this evening, there are four items. Would anyone like any of the items held out separately? Hearing none, I move the following four items. Item number one, approval of the high school entrance sign. Item number two, the change order for the Ben Franklin Elementary School project. Excuse me. Item number three, approval of the Geotechnical Engineering Field Evaluations and Construction Management Request for Proposed Project. And item number four, the approval of the Consulting Engineering Propose.
Second.
Items one through four under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
We have six items this evening under the Finance Committee. Would anybody want any of these held out for discussion? Hearing none, I move items one through six. Number one being the September 2016 salaries and bills. Number two, the August 2016 financial report. Number three, the approval of student service contracts. Number four, approval of revised Act 20 resolution. Number five, items declared unused and unnecessary. Number six, property assessment appeals settlement.
Second.
Items one through six under Finance have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. I would like Policy 113 held out, so should I move it and then hold it out, or?
No, I, well...
You can move one and two with the exception.
Yeah.
You can move them all with the exception of Policy 113.
Okay. Okay, there are three items under the Policy Committee, and would anybody like any of them withheld? Then I would move number one, approval of policies, final reading, 146 Student Services; number six, 26 Federal Fiscal Compliance; number six, 26.1 Travel Reimbursement Federal Programs; and number eight, 27 Conflict of Interest. I would also move number two, policy revisions for the final reading. 004 Membership; 114 Gifted Education; 115 Career and Technical Education; 124 Alternatives Instruction Courses; 138 English as a Second Language Bilingual Education Program; number four, 247 Hazing; number 302 Employment of a Superintendent/Assistant Superintendent; number 305 Employment of a Substitute-Administrative Employees; 405 Employment of Substitute-Professional Employees; number 505 Employment of Substitute-Classified Employees; number 808 Food Services. And also, I move item number three, policy revision, second of three readings; number 103 Non-Discrimination in School and Classroom Practices.
Okay, so we're not reading, we're not moving that, we're just reading that as the second and third reading from that last one.
Correct, correct.
Okay. I need a second on the first two items.
Second.
Pam? Okay, so, we are moving item one, final readings; item two, all of those except 113. Those were moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on those items? Item one and item two, except for 113. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry nine to zero. Those carry nine to zero.
Now I have to move 113.
Move it so we can have discussion on it, yes.
Okay, I move, under number two, policy 113, one, excuse me, 113, special education. Need a second.
Second.
Okay, item 113, policy, excuse me, policy 113, under item two, has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Would we like Ms. Andrews to address the re-read, revision read?
That's fine.
Do you have some questions you would rather ask?
No, I have a comment to make. I think that the policy we have written is totally within our purview. It's things that we're entitled to do. When you record a meeting, it requires everything to be very well documented, and it tends to inhibit free speech and the free exchange of information between people. People tend to shut up because they're afraid to say the wrong thing. That being said, the school board operates under some of these things. A lot of things we can't discuss in the back room, we have to come out here and do it, and it's a pain in the butt sometimes, to be quite honest with you. But I'm in favor of the open records law, and I think that a parent should have the right to record important meetings that involve their child. So I will be voting against it.
Okay, and it does not, well, I'll let Ms. Andrews, but I don't believe it negates a parent being able to do that, but Ms. Andrews, would you like to address that?
Right, Ms. Sutton and I did look at the policy, and we looked at recommendations regarding, you know, what the IDEA says, information based on when the IDEA was reauthorized, and it does allow boards to look at whether or not you want to allow just recordings of meetings, and if you do prohibit the recording of meetings, then you do have to have exceptions, which we do. So I think the policy does allow for the majority of meetings, as you said, Mr. Means, to be run with people that are there that are free to speak without worrying about, are they being recorded, are they saying something wrong, are they saying something right, is something being recorded for a reason that it shouldn't be recorded? And, you know, people do get nervous when they're in a meeting and there are recordings being made. If a parent is not able to participate in a meeting for reasons set forth in the policy, then they can seek permission to record. If they do, then the district will report as well.
And this is not an unusual policy, i.e., it's PSBA and other districts have the same type of policy.
Like I said, I think this is totally within our purview. It's legal, it's something we have every right to do. However, I have a particular philosophy, and I think we should be a little bit more liberal. And I would like to point out that one of the exceptions is if a parent feels that they need to record it to understand what was going on, they can do it, and that would be, that would be a request that would be fairly automatic, I believe, if you would do that.
Any other questions or comments on policy 113?
What's the penalty if one's caught? Recording without seeking permission, because it sounds like you can get permission for, like, anybody, any parent can ask for permission and can do the recording. It's just an extra step that's being imposed to help have some protection from what was described as making an awkward situation for your teachers or whatever. So it sounds like any parent can still record, but what is the penalty if they?
Per the policy, the meeting would terminate. If a parent is recording without permission, or secretly recording, and it was found out at the meeting, the meeting would stop, the meeting would terminate.
For the record, though, that would also be a criminal act, wouldn't it? Under the war type law?
Well, I don't feel comfortable talking about criminal law.
Okay.
It's not my specialty, so I'm going to punt that one.
Well, I know you could get in big trouble recording something that...
Yes, we do not want people to secretly record.
Yes, okay.
Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, aye.
That carries eight to one. Mrs. Buckley, will you take other for me this evening?
Certainly. This is for the PSBA officer elections. Do you want me to read all that information, or just leave it at that?
I think you can just leave it at that.
All right, all right. I move that for approval, please. Second.
Item one under other has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We are at the point of public comments about anything you wish to talk to the board about. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Hi, Sharon Janasik, 4314 Anna Street, 113. I still feel the same as I did last week, but now that you voted for it, I have a lot of questions about who's running it, who's receiving the requests, what are you doing with the information, where's it going, what is a parent to do? If they make their request five days in advance, the request is denied, do we push back the IEP, do they have to file a lawsuit, is there an appeal process, do they then go to the superintendent, do they then call for, if they disagree, a three-member panel from the Board of School Directors? I don't feel that there's enough information in your policy to explain to parents how this works and exactly what they need to do. And thank you, Mr. Means. And I also agree with you that saying it's necessary to ensure that the parent understands the IEP or the IEP process is pretty broad. So I'm guessing that parents then should say, especially for their first meeting, that they really don't know what the process is and would need to refer back to it, which I guess is what we'll tell parents who ask us. But I think there are a lot of questions left about the details of the policy and how it's going to work specifically. Thank you.
May I make a comment? One of the things I failed to mention is, if a recording is made, this becomes part of a student's record, and then it has to be stored basically forever.
This isn't a new policy, this was a policy that was already previously in place. Any other questions, comments to the board? Aye.
My name is Taylor Zimmer, I live at 3226 East View Road. I would just like to bring to the board's attention the conduct of the Bethel Park Cheerleading Booster Association, which I deem to be out of bounds, okay? I have met with the superintendent on a couple occasions and informed him, he can share information with you. The organization, as I see it, is being run inappropriately and to the detriment of its members. I believe the board of the Bethel Park Cheerleading Booster Association is in breach of their fiduciary obligation of care and disclosure to the members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello, my name is Sherry Bomar, 4100 Jasmine Drive, and I was, I came here today to comment on the new revised booster organization regulations. And as a parent of a booster organization, I think we're given these and really unsure of how they apply. And also, you have to understand that our organizations already have budgets in place, and so what do some of these things mean? For example, there's fall leagues and spring leagues that booster organizations pay for in camps. Is that allowed? Is it not allowed? It's not specified in the regulation. I would hope that there'd be a designated meeting with all the booster organizations to further clarify the rules that were promulgated, so that everyone can really understand, and then we could come back if there's issues with how these are to apply. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you, that's an excellent idea.
Hi, everyone, John Gentile, 567 Chesbryer Drive. I would also like to comment on this new booster policy. I've been a teacher here at Bethel Park High School in the history department for ten years. I've coached softball and soccer here for the last ten years as well, and currently the girls varsity soccer coach has been in that position for the last seven years. I just want to know the motive or intent behind this new policy. I think the policy actually has some good intent, but I think it might have been passed in haste and maybe too quickly, and as just mentioned, should have further discussion. And I think at the end of the day, is this policy for the betterment of our children, of our kids at Bethel Park? And if it isn't, then maybe we should make some changes. So are there some valid points in favor of this policy? I think there are. I think this policy is trying to maybe stop corruption, maybe make things more equal between female and male sports, but I think a blanket policy, especially one such as this, that doesn't really bring out specifics, is lacking, for lack of better words. And there's some major possible consequences that come from this. Less trainings year-round. Just for example, I run a two-week camp. It's a great community gathering of kids throughout BP, and I net a whopping $450 for those two weeks. So if that is, if that is something that is absurd for a coach to receive for those two weeks of work, to bring in community members and then help pay out their coaches, then I won't be a coach here at Bethel Park much longer. No summer camps, that negatively affects our community. We have phenomenal facilities in this, and especially with, in the music wing as well. We pride ourselves on good athletics and a good music department. The result of this policy, it will decrease our quality of coaching, our quality of athletics, our quality of our teachers teaching these kids to play music is going to decrease. And that's what's going to happen.
Mr. Gentile, your time's up.
Which is a sad day, since we have built a solid reputation of high-quality academics, athletics, and music in this district, and this policy is threatening that.
My name is Johnna Burke, I live at 448 Bassett Drive, and prior to that, I grew up at 963 Vista Glen Drive. I'm a Bethel Park person through and through. I've lived here my entire life. I'm a '90 graduate, 1990 graduate. I played basketball for Bethel Park in the late '80s. The only time I was away from Bethel Park was when I went to Butler, straight out of college, I worked there for eight years in the Butler area school district. My concern is, an email that I received on Friday titled "Procedure for Summer Camps." Number six on this procedure for summer camps states that coaches are not allowed to have checks or payments given directly to them. They must go through the associated booster group. If no booster group exists, coaches are encouraged to contact the BP rec department to host such camps. So my question today is, if I am interpreting this correctly, along with the new booster policy, is it your position that we are not allowed to receive payment from the attendees of camp directly, and we are not, as coaches, allowed to receive payment from the booster organization if the attendees pay the booster organizations? Is that correct? Are you able to answer that question for me, because I do not know the answer to that question? I know that I have worked here for 13 years, I get paid for 12 weeks, and I am not here to ask for a raise. I love my job. I wake up every day thrilled to be the Bethel Park girls' basketball coach. I love it. I'm black and gold, black and, not gold, black and orange, through and through. I'm not asking for a raise, but I'm asking that you don't take away money that we make in a summer camp or a clinic, because that money is important for me to pay my mortgage. My husband and I have a budget, and I get paid for 12 weeks of work while I work nine months a year gladly, because I love my job. But those summer camps, that helps, that helps a lot, and I'm asking that you please allow us to still receive, like Mr. Gentile said, 400, whatever the money is. It's not a lot, but it helps, so please don't take that away. And I know my time is up, but what I suggest is that we get a committee together. We get some people, we get coaches, we get booster parents, we get parents, we get athletes and administrators, and we talk about this and see what your direction is. What do you guys want to do? What do you want to see, you know, the booster groups do? What do you want to see the coaches do? How can we work together? Let's see what neighboring districts do. Every coach in high school in America runs camps, and they make a little bit of money off of it. So I ask you to please consider that, and I will spearhead that group. I will be glad to begin a committee for you if you give me that opportunity. Thank you.
Josh Bears, 5143 Orchard Avenue. I will echo Coach Burke's statements. I'm the boys' basketball coach. Unlike her, I am new to Bethel Park. I've coached varsity basketball, now this will be my 20th season coming up, and I can tell you that in the last 12 years, this past year was the least I've been paid. But I don't complain about that, I don't care about that. I coach because I appreciate the relationships I develop with the players, with the parents, with the community. So much so, that recently, my family and I have bought a house here in Bethel. I just moved in in June. I spent last April, about a year and a half ago, with many of you in that back room at about 11:00 PM on a Tuesday night, and it was one of my proudest moments, when I got that phone call that night from Mrs. Shuneman that I received this job. And I accepted it, and I've been proud of it ever since. What we need as coaches, we got into this knowing that we were not going to make a lot of money. So everything that we get, we budget for, and we know that we are going to receive. And we structure our staffs that way. Taking away the ability to run youth camps not only cheats the kids of the community that I have now bought into, but it takes away from our current players, and it takes away from the future. And it also takes away from what we've planned as adults. I'm 41 years old, I'm planning for the future. That camp money, while it might not be much to some, means everything to us. It's the ability to not only pay our bills, but to bond our varsity players with our second and third graders. How would our community feel if we did not run camps, or if we had to go to the rec center, if we had to go to Cool Springs to run our camps? We have great facilities, like Coach Burke said, we should be proud of them, we should feature them, we should involve the entire community in them. We don't make a lot of money on them. We don't make a lot of money as teachers, but it's something that helps us get through. Thank you for your time.
I'm going to stop now and ask Dr. Pascarella to address that issue.
I just, I just think one point needs to be clear. I don't believe the policy indicates that you cannot have camps, or that we're not looking for folks to have camps, but I do think that it does currently state that if you have camps, the money needs to go to the boosters and be invested back into the students. What you are saying is accurate, that what the current policy is stating is that you will not be compensated or be able to take that money directly, that that money would go there. But it doesn't say you can't have camps. Now, I understand that might discourage some of you, because you are counting on those dollars for your own personal, for your own personal well-being, and I understand and respect what you're saying, but I want to make sure that it's clear that the policy does not say that you cannot have elementary camps. It's just saying if you have elementary camps, the money has to go to the booster program rather than yourselves. That's what it states.
I appreciate that, and I completely understand that we can have camps, but I signed on for this job with, under the impression that I would be able to provide for my family, and at this point, there's no way that I can volunteer my time to what basically amounts to community service. You know, it's to the point now, I love my players, I love them to death. I walked into the gym tonight, had open gym, after I coached golf out way up north, and I came back and I went to open gym, and I spent time with my players, and I couldn't live without them. But that's me, that's my, that's my love for the relationships and the competition. But I have to also provide for my family. So if you're asking us to make a choice between making this a community service job or going and finding a part-time job to where we can make literally six or seven times the amount of money that we make coaching and providing for the community, I mean, I don't know that you're going to have the quality of coaches that you have right now. It's amazing that you have the staff assembled across the board in every sport that we have here at Bethel Park. And it's time to somewhat reward them, or at least keep status quo while we decide, like, how to move on and proceed. I just, I don't know how it's possible to proceed, like, when this becomes community service.
Thank you.
Dr. Pascarella, I have a question. Is the conflict that a coach would be having a camp on school property, if they held the, if they held the camp off of school property, say at Park Avenue School or someplace like that, would the same rules apply?
It can't, it can't apply. You can't do that to us. We can run a camp elsewhere, and you can't tell us we can't have a camp elsewhere.
That's the question he was asking. He wasn't saying you couldn't do it.
And I don't understand, can you guys vote on this? Why is there no say? Why can't you guys vote, or re-look at this? Do you understand what he's trying to do? I've done 21 years I've worked, and I've run camps, and I've gotten paid for camps, and it's not, I don't have a... it's not, I don't have a house in Costa Rica somewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I pay my mortgage.
Dr. Pascarella?
Well, to the best of my knowledge, if you're operating camps outside of the school district, I would have to talk to the solicitor, but we have no real control over what you do outside, if people run their camps outside.
Okay.
So the youth will not get to see the high school gym.
Ma'am.
They will grow up in that gym.
We have somebody at the microphone.
Okay. Am I allowed?
Everybody has two minutes. That's what the policy provides, and it's one time that you have two minutes. No, you can't stack minutes, you can't give up your minutes for other people. Everybody gets two minutes, that's the policy.
Okay, hi. My name's Joe Gilens, I live at 2699 Bethel Crest Drive. You guys know me, I've been here trying to get the ball started on this for a while. I'm here to ask that the board consider implementing a transition period to Board Policy 915 Booster Organizations to be effective July 1, 2017. Most booster organizations have longstanding arrangements to pay their coaches directly and indirectly with booster funds. This is legal, acceptable, and widespread practice within the district and in other school districts. To suddenly terminate these arrangements is not fair to the coaches affected by this new policy, as these coaches have accepted their positions and/or continue to coach under the conditions of these longstanding arrangements. By establishing a transition period to July 1, 2017, this will allow the administration to acknowledge and completely quantify the scope of this issue. The administration will have time to work with booster organizations to quantify issues regarding compliance with Title IX and booster organization practices and reporting. Booster organizations provide a valuable support to the athletic teams beyond what the school district provides. Our booster organizations want to be valuable partner to the administration to provide that support. Establishing a transition period to this policy to be effective July 1, 2017 will be a fair and right way to approach any changes that may ultimately be needed to this policy. So thank you for your consideration. I mean, all along, we want to work with you, okay? This thing doesn't need to be blown up, it needs to be tweaked, perhaps, to be legal. Everyone wants to be legal and above board and do it the right way. And we want to work with you as partners. We want to be that support to do, provide what you guys, you know, beyond what you guys can provide. So that's where we're coming from on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Craig Spence, I live at 812 Boulder Drive. I currently have a daughter who's a junior, plays basketball, had played soccer and basketball, involved in the booster organizations myself. I find it amazing that we're here tonight, having these coaches. I have lived here since 1968, Joe, and I graduated in 1979. I think it's amazing and sad, a school district, and I don't know the whole budget number, you have a $77 million budget, I think. We're approaching $18,000 a student for to educate our kids. I don't pay that much to educate my daughter at Penn State when you take room and board off. We're here arguing, our basketball coach, who could go to anywhere in the section to coach, they'd be glad, thrilled to have her. We're booting her out the door over $450. Y'all should be ashamed of yourself, the same with soccer. We went through this with football. We have a man 22-years. They don't bring up all the other things. Maybe you know, you know, she spearheaded the Joey Fabus, just had to run and walk. These are all things that people do that make Bethel Park a good community to raise a child, and the schools, what you all provide. I find it amazing that these things changed. I don't know whether it's with you coming to the district or how this has happened, but it is amazing, amazing to me. And I think you should revisit it. Work on getting an early-bird contract for the teachers, there's a great idea. You know, things like that we need to do, not fight over $450. So thank you all, good night.
Becky Lazier, 6005 for Pennwood Court. I am the girls' lacrosse head coach at Bethel Park High School, a position I'll be holding for the ninth straight year this coming season. During that time, we have, of the eight seasons I've coached, we've reached the playoffs five times. Three of those times, we've gone past the first round. I am a two-term elected president of our Coaches Association by my peers, as well as a Whipple Coach of the Year. Every year, we have players represented on the all-section and all Whipple teams, as well as every year but one, that we had eligible seniors going on to play at the next level collegiately. I don't say any of this stuff, because it's a pat on my back. It really is a collective effort by myself and our coaching staff, our parents, our athletic program, down to the teachers who support my kids by giving them that away the next day after we make a playoff berth. So from my perspective, I'm really concerned that these policies were passed prematurely. It's my understanding that there wasn't a lot of public discourse, like you're seeing here, before the policies were passed. I can certainly appreciate the need to get the policy in place for the school year to start. As a former educator, I understand that, and as a former administrator, I understand that. But I do think that you're seeing that there's a lot of unintended consequences, and there may be also some misunderstandings of how things are actually operating out here, as opposed to how they are in the policy. Coaches are happy to coach in a school district when it reaches three different areas for them. Facilities, which we have, are beautiful. Athletic department support, which we're currently without an athletic director, and lost, which was probably the highest-achieved touted AD in the entire region, without trying to fight for her, keep her, no exit interview. So this is like something that's really upsetting to the coaches. And now you look into other things, like our ability to supplement our pay, which I am probably the lowest-paid, sorry, I'm dealing with a cold, I'm probably the lowest-paid head girls' lacrosse coach in western Pennsylvania, but probably also only one of five that's been coaching for 15-years or more at this point. So I just encourage you to revisit it. I think that Coach Burke brought up a great idea. We need to postpone implementation, open up for conversation, get a committee together. I think you have a lot of people that are willing to work with you, want to come together. We're here for the kids. If it was for the money, we'd be coaching in another district. We're Bethel Park through and through, and we just need your support to help us do stuff out on the field that you guys all make these decisions in this building. Thank you.
And I had concurred with her when she came up to the microphone initially, and I said, "That was a wonderful idea," and I believe that's the route that I would suspect the board would choose to take. Mr. Workmeister.
Should I give my comment to the fellow here now, or do we wait?
Well, you want me to just go to board comments? Are we, is everybody?
Okay, wait.
Just wait, we'll go to board comments. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Okay, I'll go to board comments, and I'll start down at that end, so you'll be third. I'll start with Mr. Ammons.
First of all, I appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I want to make one comment, that I heard that all this is happening because of him, and the fingers are pointed at our superintendent. And I want to be clear that it's not because of him, this is a decision that the board has made. So if anybody's going to be angry, be angry at the entire board. Let me just go a little bit into the decision and how it was made. The information was brought to us about the things that were happening, so the board acted in terms of questions of legality and ethics, which is why we put the policy in place. The last thing I'll say in regard to that then, and the third comment is that I do think the idea to have some discussions on it, to find out where we are going, to possibly delay this until the, for at least a year, to see how to work things out, is a good idea. So we could try to form that committee, that'd be a good idea. They are the reasons that, as I said, legality, the ethics reasons are the reasons why we implemented the policy, and it was a policy put in place by the board, not just one individual.
Thank you.
Yeah. So let me add to that a little bit. This gentleman brought up the role of fiduciary responsibility, and that's one of the number-one roles of the board, is to have a fiduciary responsibility. And when we find out about something that was unaware to us, and the possible implications of Title IX, you know, we live in a world that is litigation-happy, and it exposes the school, and the board, and everybody to a tremendous amount of litigation risk. So was it quick? Yes. Are we open to considering something else and working out? I'm speaking for myself, yes. I think that there's a number of very reasonable recommendations that were made. So yes, we should work this out, but, you know, again, as a board, we have a responsibility also. So that's it on the coaching. And the other thing, I just wanted to comment, because this is a big thing for me, when we see the highlights of students, but we saw this, this is from Mr. Christofalis, I think, around data fluency. This is such a big deal, and I don't think that anybody, many people probably appreciate the connections and probably the information that's coming back from this partnership with CMU around data analysis and managing big data. This is a huge, huge field of not only today, but of the future. And when our teachers are partnering with CMU, that's the, you know, leading software development organization in the world. I mean, these guys are fantastic. They're bringing back some tremendous resources for the students. So I would just say that, you know, this is a, shows some great initiative by these teachers, and I would say a great passion for teaching also.
Absolutely. Mr. Workmeister.
Okay. Let me first start off by saying my admiration for all the coaches and everybody that dedicates and volunteers their time, like we're volunteering our time up here, we get paid nothing as well. And my pride, or what was it, my thanks to all of you go out to you right now to say thank you for all your hard work and love, dedication, especially to students. And like Spence said here, we have Act IX. We have also the taxes to worry about, because if we don't know about it, there's no problem. That's why it was going on as it was. I'm new on the board, so I definitely didn't know about it. But even when I first signed on, I did not know what was going on about the boosters and how the money works. It was stated here, I wrote notes down, that it's legal, that the way the boosters do it. The way I was told, and I'm not going to speak for the board, but my understanding is it's illegal to be giving money to anybody, it doesn't have to be coaches and that, for an organization like this, without the government getting their hands in on the taxes and everything else. So that was one thing that made me vote yes, that we do want to get this policy out. And the reason it was in haste was because the boosters was all starting up right now, you know, for the new season, the new year, and it was prudent for the boosters to have some foundation to look at and know what to do. And this is fine, I mean, we expected that there would be a lot of grief, because status quo, the way it used to be, may not be allowed now, or if it is allowed, we need to work on it with the solicitor and find out what legal ways we can make it work. Because I myself would want to see coaches be paid, if you guys that are in the boosters want to give extra money to the coach because they're dedicating their time or anything else, that's fine. You know, I mean, I don't see anything wrong with it, except for the fact, you know, when you do that, is the girls and the boys, is it fair? Because if the boosters, that's what we've been told, and that's what I'm telling you. I know that some people say, "No," but if it's wrong, if it's not an issue, well, then good. Then my vote would be different. But if there is a conflict because of Act IX, like I was told, then we have to worry about that, as a board, because we have the legal responsibility up here to make sure that we protect the district from anything being illegal. So again, the best solution is, we need to maybe talk some more, but the foundation was laid out by having that initial policy, and, you know, everybody's ideas here should be considered, and we need to make it legal. And also, off of the booster thing, just congratulations to everybody that had their awards there, and our district is great, and like the one that has reportedly a black and orange in her blood, and whatever, yes, I mean, this is, you know, what Bethel Park's about, and we want to see the district to be the same for everybody. So, enough talking.
Mrs. Roll.
I'm not going to beat a dead horse. I mean, I know it's something we have to discuss further, and sports is an important part of our whole educational system, but I think also, what you need to understand is that we have legal obligations, and our first commitment has to be that we are protected as a school district. And that is some of the things that you will probably, you know, learn as we have further discussions. But that's where we stand right now. But I appreciate you coming out tonight. I want to then go to my roles with the AIU. We've had a meeting, and the one thing I want you to be apprised of is that the Allegheny Intermediate Unit is really striving to make sure that the fees that they charge all of the schools are really, match the programs that they provide. There's been some discussion, and it was in the paper a year ago, that there were some problems with the financial disclosures that they were having. But now, they have gone to all the schools, they've met with all the superintendents, and they are providing services that the superintendents have requested, and their fees are being charged appropriately, so that every program now stands alone, and all the charges are associated with that program. So there's no co-mingling of any funds across programs. So that has been a big issue, and it's all been corrected and audited, and all the schools are in good shape now. I'll just want to mention that Steel Center is restructuring. They are putting into place a curriculum director, and they will be focusing on the curriculum that they offer, and that's a big step. Most of the VOTEC schools, or they call them career centers now, are focusing on trying to combine more of education and your trades. One of the things that has come up has been, there's a German model that the US has looked at, and several of the states have already accepted. Pennsylvania, of course, is always a little slower. But it is combining, your VOTEC student would maybe go to school maybe one or two days a week, and they would work in the trade, be paid, they would come out debt-free, and they would also come out with an associate's degree. So they're really trying to see how they can be more flexible with education, because there's a critical shortage coming up within the next couple of years, that they are really concerned, manufacturing in particular, and a lot of those companies will not have any skilled tradesmen. So we are borrowing from Germany, their model. So you'll be hearing a lot more about that. But it is a new, new direction, and it's good to see that their focus is on the education side. That's real important. The only other thing is that I will be attending PSBA, and I think I received about 30 pages of legislation that we'll be looking at, that we will spend about four hours going through all those, and preparing a platform that will then go to our senators and representatives to pursue.
Very good. Thanks for representing us at PSBA. Mr. Stafusa.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I've been on that side of the table one day, many years ago, I think a few of the board members, and I'll leave their names unmentioned, were on the board prior to me becoming a board member. My daughter, I was a member of the soccer boosters, my daughters played soccer, my son played soccer, my son played football, I had kids in the band. So I've been in all these organizations. For years and years and years, we had a middle-school boys' soccer team, but we didn't have a girls' middle-school soccer team. So I went to the superintendent, or the athletic director, who went to the superintendent, and it went nowhere. So, like you, I did my homework, spent my time, I even received a call from the Department of Justice, scared to live in daylights out of me, frankly. And I did a lot of research on Title IX. And Title IX is probably the reason that I support this policy, because I learned, and I'm, I got my legal counsel there, so I'm not going to speak for her, but she knows way more about it than I do, but I learned things that, you know, people, I tell them, and they look at me like you're crazy, it doesn't work that way. But it does. If the girls' booster basketball team bought tennis shoes for the girls' basketball team, by law, the school district would be required to buy the boys' basketball team the same shoes. I mean, it's hard to comprehend, and I'm, but I mean, I'm, but I'm just using the example, I mean, it's like, it has to be equal across the board, is what I'm saying. So when you start, when you start having people, and, you know, having more coaches or paying more coaches, and it can become a legal issue, and...
But they're separate entities.
They are not.
They are separate entities. You have...
Okay, we're not going to have, we're not going to have a discussion.
No, ma'am, they're not. By Title IX, it has to be equal across the board. Doesn't matter.
So you might all admit this is not...
No, no, I'm just giving you an example of what I've learned, that's all. I'm not going to have a discussion, I'm just telling you what I've learned. So it runs a lot deeper than people think, and that's my point. Just assume, don't assume that you know what Title IX is. Do the research, find out. It's very complicated, and that's my reason for supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for coming out tonight. It's nice to have people here.
It's nice to have people here. I'd like to thank the folks involved with the report on all of the things that our students and staff have accomplished, because that was a very positive time in the meeting. For those of you who don't know me personally, I have been married to a coach for 36 years. So thank you, coaches, and all the things that you do for our students. Believe me, I understand firsthand when they walk in the door at 11 o'clock at night and all the things that go along with coaching. My father used to say to me, who's now in heaven, he would say, "Why doesn't John just sell shoes? He would make more money than coaching." And that's true. That was a true statement then and it could very well be a true statement now. But the bottom line was, my husband loved working with the children and so therefore he coached and, and that's what it's all about. I will first of all say that under no conditions was it Dr. Pascarella's directive for us to put this in. So please don't blame him. There is no one to be blamed here. The bottom line is, our intent is not to punish anyone. We are here to support and protect our children and we must also follow the law. And so for those reasons, that's why the changes were made. And yes, it was made quickly for the, but it was timely matter that needed to be addressed because when a board is made aware of things that are taking place that are not following the law, we can't ignore it and say, "Well, you know what? Let's just try it and discuss it later." It was brought to our attention and by law, we have to address it. And that's what we did. We are here to protect your children. You may not agree with the policy and the changes and I respect the fact that you differ with us, but bottom line is, we are protecting children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Means.
Yeah, I, I guess I will beat a dead horse. Everybody's familiar with the NCAA rules and it's in the news all the time, you know, college gets in trouble before, because of something their booster organization does. And we aren't in the NCAA, but under Title IX, we can be held accountable for what our booster organizations do. So it was necessary for us to pass a, a policy in order to deal with this. It may be flawed, we can modify it. I, myself, I'm not speaking for anybody else, I would not be in favor of delaying it because there are legal issues the way we said. So it, it, it would be my intention to host a meeting where we could get together with all the people and work out some of the details and maybe modify it so we can address some of these camps and things like that and, and see if we can come up with more equitable solution.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobis.
I agree that on this policy, we acted too hastily. We only did one reading that night and we're supposed to do three readings. That's why I voted against it, because I knew it was going to cause an explosion. And I'm not surprised that you're all here talking about that. I think that Mr. John's suggestion that we delay it until July 1st is a good, good suggestion. I understand there are legal ramifications to, you know, all of that, but I think that we need to get together and we need to talk to the people involved and work out a, a compromise, work out a solution for it all, because I have never thought that a coach was, you know, ripping off kids or parents by having a camp. All the camps that I've ever seen involve young kids, elementary kids and everybody, you know, being mentored by the older kids and different things like that. So I don't know whether it's possible or as part of the meeting, are we, I'm asking you as a legal counselor, are we able to move at this point in time to have it delayed or do we have to wait?
You have to wait. Your, your policy requires you to adopt the agenda and you've adopted the agenda. So that would be at your next meeting.
So in Robert's rules, somebody can't add to that? It has to be done at the beginning of the meeting?
Your agenda has, your agenda has to be, your agenda has to be adopted at the beginning and that's why when you are adding things to the agenda, as you did tonight, it was adopted at the beginning of the meeting as it was last meeting as well.
So you could, but we could still form a committee to?
Yes.
Talk about this for the next, for next month?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. I was just wondering. Thank you.
Yes. And, and again, I concurred with, I think it was Ms. Burke who was up here and about hosting a meeting and having a, a discussion so that we can explain more thoroughly, as several of my fellow board members have explained, the ramifications that we felt we were under. I'd, I'd like to begin by saying this all started with a booster member or two who reported some things to the board. And that's where we began the investigation. And a lot of things came out of the investigation that led us to feel that we needed to have this policy in place to start the school year. There are Title IX ramifications, which again, we can discuss, discuss at length at, at a hosted meeting. It, it doesn't have to do, well, there's overall numbers, how the money is spent, how many programs, how many coaches. So it's like the overall numbers. It, it, it doesn't just go to one booster group versus another booster group, but again, we can explain that at, at a meeting. There, there's a big question about all of our students and who gets to participate and who doesn't when there's an extra cost involved? Who gets to ultimately play and who doesn't when there's an additional cost involved when these activities are held at our district facilities? Okay, that's where we talk about tutoring, we talk about the music program, we talk about, if it's a district-sponsored event, that's one thing. If it's a privately sponsored event, that's another thing. So again, things we can discuss at a hosted meeting, but we have to look at those kinds of items and answer those for all of our students. So that, those are concerns that came up. We do offer tutoring through the district. We do offer band practice through the district. When you talk about offering private things and add a cost to certain students, that's where you get into the gray area and that's where we are at. I don't think anyone considers that coaches were ripping anyone off by having a camp. That certainly is not the intent of this policy, to say that coaches are ripping anybody off and we don't want them to be able to do that. That, again, I have to look at all of my students in the district and when select students get to participate in, in activities, you do have to look at that. There, there was some concern to me, though maybe not legally, but 1099s or other tax statuses. I don't have to govern over that, but I don't know what my booster groups are doing when they're saying they're adding and paying coaches. Are they filing 1099s? I don't know that. I, again, now that it's been brought to my attention, I feel as a board member, maybe I do need to be involved in my business office auditing books and knowing those kinds of things. I'm, I'm, you know, again, a question for the legalities of all of that. So for all of those reasons, we, I personally voted to enact this policy. But as I said, I would, we will talk to the superintendent, we will direct a meeting to be held with the board and with those parties involved, the coaches, the boosters, whoever would want to come to further hear about the policy and further discuss the policy with us. Thanks to all of you for all that you do, our booster groups, our coaches, our staff. And we hope that you do it and I think several of you said you do it for the love of the children. That's why we're all here. We're not paid. We do it because we love our community and we love our students and we have a great community and we have great students and we want to keep it great. We certainly don't want to have a policy or have anything else that you feel is, isn't appropriate to keep Bethel Park great. I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.